Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, April 28th, 2008. It's honor about 7:00 PM this evening. City Council has five committee meetings, starting with Planning and Development. Debbie.
Thanks, Mr. President. I have two items on the agenda and one miscellaneous that I'm aware of. The first agenda item is an application for revocable license for use of our right-of-way for a sign, and the applicant is Mr. Patel. And I believe he's here and maybe could talk to us for a few minutes about the request. This is a site that we did visit during the street tour. We had a chance to look at the location and have a little bit of discussion about this on the bus. And I think there also are some concerned folks who want to talk to us about this. But if you want to either come up to the podium or to the table where there's a microphone, either one is fine, and just, you know, present, you know, two or three minutes about what your request is.
Yeah. My name is Hasu Patel, and I'm the owner of the Budget Host. This is a motel on Highway 50 going towards Albany. And I'm running this motel for last 21 years, and I'm having the problem for the directional sign at the intersection of South Blackburn Road and the Budget Host Drive. I'm trying for last 21 years to get the permission, but for some reason, every time I get rejected. Now, the question is, even there is a street light at the corner of South Blackburn Road and Budget Host Drive, that's the light also I'm paying for it. So in that way, I thought that maybe it could be helpful for the customers to have to enter in the motel. Due to signage, I'm losing at least plus-minus $1,000 any year, because when I'm holding the guaranteed reservations, and when they can't find the entrance of the motel, then they end up at the other motels, and then they call us in the middle of the night that we can't find the entrance, so we end up at the other motel, and I can't charge to the customer. We had a sign of the, from the interstate logo, which is blue and white signs on the highway, and I was paying $720 a year as rent for the signs. But then, for some reason, the Ohio Department of Transportation, I think they changed the law, and those signs had to come out. So now I don't have any directional signs at all. Even I didn't mean to say to go against the council members, but I tried with two different lawyers, attorneys also at the town, to see if I can, if I can get the help from them to get the signage, but they didn't work also. Now, due to the increase of traffic for the last five, five years, and that intersection definitely, we need some kind of signage so the people make easy for them to make a turn on that intersection. Sometime even when the guest, they can't find the entrance, even the Athens Police Department and also the state troopers, they have helped my guest to help to get into the motel. They just escort them to the motel. And still I'm trying for 21 years to get the directional sign permission.
And one of the reasons I think that it has been turned down in the past is that this is an R1 residential area, and the request is for a freestanding sign, which isn't allowed in an R1 zone. So that has been the issue over the years when you've come and made this request before, that previous councils have not accepted this because it is an R1 zone. So just to, you know, provide that background information. I think that a lot of members, if I'm representing this accurately, on the street tour did feel that it's a pretty dangerous intersection, and can understand that if people are confused and not sure where they're going there, that it could increase the risk in that area. I know there are some other folks who are interested in speaking to us about this situation, and I believe that council member Nysely may have also talked with some interested folks about a possible compromise that would, so I don't know if you want to, if we should hear from everybody first and then you describe that, or if you want to go ahead and lay that out now as something that is being considered.
Perhaps we, I think the compromise that was presented on the street tour was the possibility of setting it in the, in the right-of, in the right-of-way, I believe. And the other thing that's been presented is if there wouldn't be a possibility of having some kind of signage on either end that would block it from the view of the residents who are on Blackburn Road, so that that might be a possible compromise. I did have two questions. Is this, bringing up your fact, is this, is this a failed intersection? And Debbie, this may be knowledge that you have, I think by the Department of Transportation, I think this, this intersection has already been rated as, as a failed. They rate them from A to E on their danger level.
I'm not sure.
So, and my other, I had one other question is, what is the difference between the signage that would be presented to be placed at Blackburn and Route 50 on this side of the highway where the Budget Host Hotel is? How is this different than the Kimes signage that is across the highway?
Probably not at all, and after council approved the Kimes signage, there was a lot of angry residents that came to see us about it.
Okay. And that's also in an R1?
And that's also, Sherry, is this not your neighborhood?
It is my neighborhood, and I believe that is a failed intersection, that it's been designated as a failed intersection. I've heard that from someone who I think knows. It's a very dangerous intersection. I pull out every morning to come to work and just hold my breath, because cars fly up 50, just fly.
I'd like to go ahead and invite folks who've come here to speak to us about this to go ahead and do that, and then open up our discussion, just so everybody can hear the different perspectives. We have a lot of new members of council since this has been discussed, so did anyone else wish to speak to council on this topic? Go back here first.
Hi, I'm Charlie Hooper. I live at 6935, or 6909 South Blackburn Road. My mother lives at 6935 South Blackburn Road. I'm representing her here, since she's 88, and it might have been a bit of a challenge for her to get here tonight. I'm one of the ones who has been here before, and I was one of the ones who had a real problem with the Kimes sign, still do. Let me say right now, Debbie took the words right out of my mouth, you know, it's an R1 district, zoning district, and that means no signage, plain, straight, and simple to me. What, you know, the, the sign across the street, from what I understand, again, if your contiguous, they contact you, and I guess the people who were across the street, one of the houses I know is a rental house, I'm sure he didn't care. We, after the, we didn't know it was even going in until it was up. That's when we filed our complaint. I met with Dale Hamkey, who was a member of council. We attempted to come up with some kind of a compromise on that particular sign, nothing ever panned out. I, you know, I'm not going to say that I'm going to accept a compromise. I will look at a compromise, but I think that, you know, what stands is stands. It's an R1 zone, and that's what it remains, and that does not allow sign, plain, straight, and simple. I have sympathy for Mr. Patel, but it's an R1, and he knew that, I think, when he bought the place, and it hasn't changed in the last 18 years. So I would be in opposition.
There he is.
Fred Weber was also one of the residents that visited us regarding the Kimes sign.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Reeves. I live at 6898 South Blackburn Road, right on the corner. I have the corner house, the old Weber house, as a matter of fact. And I can sympathize with Mr. and Mrs. Patel very much, but to me, if a sign is put on the corner in front of my house, I would think that people coming from either direction would be missing the sign, and I would think it would be more beneficial to put the sign further along Highway 50 either way, rather than right at the intersection. I don't know if this has been considered or not, but once, if it's in front of my house at the corner, you've already, it's too late to make that turn. And having worked for ODOT, yes, that is a failed intersection, I know that for sure. I worked for ODOT for several years before I retired. But at any rate, I was just thinking that that might be beneficial, if that was something that has or could be considered, because if the sign is right there, you'll miss it.
It's too late.
It's too late. Right. By the time you see the sign in front of my house, you'd miss it. Plus, I've talked about this before, I have a historic house that's eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, so I don't particularly want a sign in front of my house. As far as the Kimes sign, I'm right across the street, I was never notified of anything. I don't know how notification is given in cases like that. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Do anybody else want to speak to us about this before we open up our discussion? Okay. Jim?
Yeah, I also live in the neighborhood now, and I was looking at this today, in particular, coming from both directions, and that, I was going to suggest exactly what Ms. Reeves just suggested, that maybe a pair of signs placed alongside the highway further back, saying Budget Host next left, Budget Host next right, would, here she, yeah. But, but I have seen a dozen or more people clearly searching for that turn at, near that intersection, and putting themselves and other drivers in dangerous territory. And had they been given that direction by a sign sometime before they reached the intersection, I think it would be more helpful. That was my thought. But given that possibility, I think we're dealing then with ODOT property alongside the road, and it would be a whole another set of issues with regard to placing that sign, I think.
Right. One of the things that we, that we did talk about on the street tour was the idea of those blue ODOT signs, which we, at the time, thought would be an option, but if that program's been discontinued, then I, I don't know if it's just the highway type, because I know I see those signs in a lot of locations. So maybe that's something that we should look into as well, whether that is an option, because they usually put those, you know, some distance from the place where you would exit. Other thoughts?
I think we have in the documentation, maybe from Steve Pearson, the notice that it had been, that that program has been discontinued, the blue signs. Now, I drove out there this morning, and there are the smaller blue transportation signs, universal symbols for a hotel, and I believe that the one coming from Route 50 west in towards Athens is approximately one-tenth of a mile before the actual turnoff of the road. And traveling at 55 miles an hour, that's tough to, you know, slow down in time to make the turn. Yeah. I'm wondering, can, can we have a, we have a map that's been provided for us, and I'm not sure of the date on this map, but this is the suggestion from 2006. And I'm wondering if we might get a clarification on what the current request is for the exact placement of the sign. As I'm understanding it now, it would be at the intersection of Blackburn and Route 50. So it would not, as I'm understanding it, it would not be directly in front of your house, Mary Ann?
Yes, it would be.
Or it would be?
Yeah.
Very close. Very close. Yeah, okay.
And what we talked about on the street tour was whether it makes a difference, like which side of the ODOT fence it's on, in terms of visibility for the road, you know, for travelers, and also for folks in nearby residences.
I don't think you can have it on the ODOT side of the road, have it placed.
So would there, would there be an option then for placing it further, you know, prior to the, earlier on before the sign, rather than a tenth of a mile, or rather than right at that intersection? Or are we always going to face the ODOT right-of-way problem?
Well, I think if we're, if we conform with their rules, I mean, there are signs alongside highways, so it would probably be a matter of whether we have any right-of-way there to be able to, you know, have that authority. Okay. Did you have some information?
I'm trying to remember if that didn't come up before, when one of the priors had chicks, and Debbie and I were discussing that, and I don't think you can be on the roadside of ODOT's fence.
Right.
So, you know, I, I don't think that's an option at all. Now, when you say what are the options, you've got the right-of-way that you can use. Now, you can give them, you know, you can give them the sign placement if you want. So any of those within the city limits is an option. Some people would not like it a lot, but that's council's prerogative.
Well, I just wonder, given the suggestions that have been made about some further distance to give people time to actually see the sign and slow down and make the turn, whether we need to ask the street director to look at what is our right-of-way, some distance from that intersection on either side, and what other property owners are involved then, if we were going to look into that? I just, I feel like we need more information if we're going to develop some kind of compromise before we can take something, you know, either up or down. Does that seem like a reasonable way to proceed, to try to get some more information about that possibility?
I think it is.
Okay. Ilahu?
I was just going to say that it might also be important to get a letter from ODOT concerning if we're allowed to put signs that close to the highway. I don't know enough about the laws on those highways as to whether or not we, someone would be allowed to put one there. If someone does right now, go ahead and share, but I know they have limitations on billboards, how many you can have, where they can be, so there might be similar rules on signs and the size of them.
They even have limitations on new water and sewer lines. What's the zoning in this, Debbie?
This particular areas are R1. The compromise that a couple people mentioned is whether it's worth looking into placing signs further from the intersection on each side that said, you know, turn in quarter-mile or something like that, so that people actually have time to see the sign and slow down to make the turn. So if we try to, if we, we can look at what the zoning would be in those locations, and what our right-of-way is in those locations, and then have a little bit more information to talk about this again. Because I don't have the whole zoning map in my, you know, I can't just call it up in my mind's eye.
I think most of, on both sides of the road is R1.
Is it?
Yeah.
There are some apartment buildings, not too much further down.
Athens apartments, of course. Yeah, and they're, they're actually.
Athens apartments.
R3. They should be R3.
We just rezoned that area. The whole area was R3, and we just rezoned it, and I think we.
Behind it, anyway.
Behind it, Berkeley Place.
Did we go around the apartments, because I did?
Berkeley is what we rezoned, as I remember, wasn't it?
Well, we panned over and, so.
So what I'd like to do is get us a zoning map of the area, some information about the right-of-way a little further from the intersection on both sides, and come back to this discussion at another meeting, because I just feel like we need more information.
Can I ask a question more quickly?
Yeah, come on up to the mics, so people in TV land can hear you.
Will you, will you let us know when the next meeting is?
Yeah, everybody who came to speak to us about this tonight will be sure and let you know.
Okay.
When we've got that.
Okay, that's, that's my main concern.
Okay.
In the short run. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, the next item on my agenda, we have a request for a lot split that I think requires variances in the plains. People should have received some information in your council mailbox, I guess it was last time, about this. It came through the Planning Commission, and we do have Mr. Lewis from the Citizens Bank of Logan here to talk with us about this, and sit anywhere there's a microphone. And please describe your request to us.
Absolutely. I mean, this is obviously not within the city of Athens, but it is in an incorporated area, which I believe is within three miles of the city limits of Athens. So again, and what has happened is the, the bank unfortunately got this property in foreclosure. We worked very hard basically to try to not take anything back in foreclosure. I'm very happy to say that as we speak today, I think we only have one residential foreclosure going on in Athens County, and obviously we also have quite a bit in, in Hocken County, we have no residential foreclosures going on in Hocken County. Unfortunately, the individual who owned this property, I think, had some severe personal property, personal problems, so that's why we ended up having to foreclose on the real estate. This, what, basically what you have here is in, on this particular street in the plains, you have basically two buildings that are built on two lots in the plains. Unfortunately, when they build it, they build across the lot line, so there's basically, this is on First Avenue in the plains, there's one house, basically, which is the equivalent to a single-family residence in the front, and then there's another triplex in the back. I mean, and basically, and they've always been, more or less run as two separate, separate entities, and I don't know why, but I mean, you know, but for some reason, that's the way they built them. And what we're trying to do is split it, basically, so that as opposed to the split running this way, it'll now run this way. And again, obviously, what we're trying to do is make it so that all of all across First Avenue there, except for one building, it's all single-family residences. I mean, so obviously, this then could be sold as a single-family residence, otherwise it's basically going to be sold as a complex. In the back then, I mean, it actually does face an alley, however, if you take a look there, there are actually two other, one is an apartment building, two other residences that actually face on the alley, and then the alley basically empties out on the one side onto South Plains Avenue. So again, and that is a commercial district. So again, there, there is access on both sides. So that's what we're trying to do, is basically what we think is the right thing, which is basically make it so that you can have a, so that street then will be almost all single-family residences on the one side, and then obviously, you'd have the other, which would be, is a triplex, which is a much newer structure on the back. And that's what we've been trying to do.
Is that a platted alley?
I'm sorry, I do not know. But it, it looks as if it is.
Do you have any maps or drawings of this? We have just the memo from the Planning Commission. Do you have documents that were presented to the Planning Commission with a, a drawing of the lot?
Yes, yes, we do.
It would be helpful to me to see that. I think that we would need to know that there's either a platted alley or some kind of right-of-way to a public street. Yeah, please.
I was supposed to say, Captain May I?
I mean, it sounds like something that needs to be corrected. So this is the, the current lot split, goes through the house.
That is correct.
And this is parking for these, for the triplex?
Yeah, this is the triplex here, parking here. And then there's actually a fence that runs all the way down here.
Well, if that says it's a right-of-way, that's probably platted, although it's narrow, there, it looks like there's some public access.
What's the address?
Eight and eight and a half. First Street, yeah, First Avenue, actually. Oh, First Street, I'm sorry.
I wonder if 911 or anyone's going to have an issue if it has no frontage on First Street with that address, whether that's another issue that may need to be taken care of. And it seems to me that having the house cut in half by a lot line is a problem, that even if we're creating unusual lot sizes, it would make sense to, to make the lots be more consistent with the structures that exist.
Yeah, if we were to fill that, we would not have built that, that's totally a problem.
So is this the triplex and the apartment?
I just wanted to pick up on what Congressman Phillips mentioned about 911. Most of you know where the flower shop is, that there are several houses up that alley, which is actually our alley, and the fire chief was just there saying that there was, he needed to get 911 down there, because they're not shown on any maps, and so I'm afraid this might be a similar situation. So I think we ought to go ahead and approve this split, but before we do, just make sure that everyone's aware of.
You sent a memo to 911 that they, they want to look at this and make sure they have a workable address for this structure?
Yeah. And, and also, the fire department checked that alley to make sure that that's reasonable access.
Ten foot wide.
Yeah, but who knows if there's parking, if people are parking there.
If it could be one.
I'm saying ten foot wide's not enough.
Right. But given the fact that they may well be tenants parking there, then that's another issue. So I just think those people should be notified and have a chance to weigh in on that.
Do you think we need a response from them before our third reading?
Before our third reading, yeah.
Okay. So we will talk to the fire department and 911 to, to have them look at the access issues, and whether there needs to be a change in the address for emergency access purposes. Are there any other comments or questions? Nancy?
Ilahu had his hand.
I was just going to ask if there's been any opposition by neighbors since we've initiated this.
Not that I'm aware of at all. I mean, the only thing, I mean, we actually talked to the neighbor on the one side. If you notice, it actually is part of the split, there's a little chunk we're taking out on the one side, and that's actually because when the house on the west side was built, they actually built it over the lot line. I mean, so obviously, one of the things we're trying to do as part of the split is basically have that approved, so basically, I mean, there, and they, so the building, the building, which is, I want to say it's like about this far, so it's about what, a little over two feet, less than three feet, is actually built over the lot line, so basically, that's actually part of it as well. I mean, and that's, again, something that, I mean, we obviously need to deal with.
So that building is existing on one of your lots?
Yeah, yes.
And you're essentially giving them a couple feet to straighten that out legally?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that's, also, if you take note, that is also part of the split as well.
Okay. Nancy?
How many bedrooms in those units, the triplex?
I want to say two, but I'll be honest, I do not remember.
Three?
Three.
So how many occupants are at any time, roughly? Are there children in that area?
Right now, the, it is, all the three units and the one in the front are all vacant.
Right, because of foreclosure. I was just wondering about the problem with not enough space around the house for kids to play in, that sort of thing. I guess it's, that ship has sailed by now, because somebody made a bad decision.
That it has.
But the, you know, the economic layout with the quality of, well, whatever, quality of life or something on that order.
For some reason, when it was done, I mean, you know, all, all of the grass space and green area is given to the single-family residents in the front, and then in the back, I mean, it looks more like what I would refer to as student housing, where basically, it's, I mean, in the, in that area, it's all blacktop. I mean, and then, I mean- I mean, and then, I mean, all the rest of that area is parking.
And we'd really like to get rid of that concept as student housing.
I understand, but I mean, just, so, obviously...
Some grass, a place to sit out in the sun?
I understand, but I mean, I'm just wanting to let you understand what it looks like to me.
All right. If people are okay with this, I'd like to go ahead and bring this up for first reading and we'll get answers from the fire department and 911 before our third reading. Okay?
And again, I believe Mr. Pearson and I believe Ms. Walker also have my email address as well as phone number. So I mean, if there are any further questions, if there are any things you need to follow up, I'd be happy to do so.
Would you go to volunteer fire department in the plains instead of ours?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it is right in the plains.
Yeah.
I mean, if you know where Auto Exchange is and Bargain Billy's, I mean, it's right next to that.
Okay. Well, we will look into that, but we'll go ahead and have it up for first reading next week. Jeff?
I've asked a question of the, the Planning Commission members are here, who are here. When you're dealing with property outside of the city limits, do we contact the adjoining property owners to let them know that something's being considered?
I really don't know. I think, I assume that they do for any Planning Commission meeting.
I assumed that, but I didn't see anything to note, so.
Okay.
Nor have we heard from them.
There was nobody there, really, from the neighborhood, who had discussed it at that point. Just for the record, I voted against it.
Bet you did.
It was two to one. Paula, you were dealing with the bomb scare, was it at that time?
Two to one, how dare.
No, actually, I voted for it.
Okay.
Bet you did.
There you go.
And it's just a classic example, if I may say, of why the Z word, you know, zoning is needed particularly in that area where it's, you know, there's no... They built that total lot coverage and right up to the height and the number that they could without having to comply with any state building regs. And of course, they're outside of our zoning, so.
I always remember when an issue involving a subdivision in the plains would come to the Planning Commission, when Joanne Presley chaired the Planning Commission, first thing she'd say is, "You folks need to get a form of government."
I understand.
But this looks like something that's an existing issue that we could try to simplify legally at least.
Agreed.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's my only copy that may...
Yes.
That's all right. Thank you very much.
And I have one miscellaneous item for planning and development. A group calling themselves the U.S.C. Committee from the Council on the Plan Process suggested changes to Title 27 to try to add some specificity. Title 27 is the land development ordinance. And this is printout of the email. I know this is the first time everybody's seeing this. So what I thought we could do is just have a little bit of a discussion and then give people time to think it over. So you may want to go look at the existing Title 27, which deals with land development. And it basically sets guidelines to try to prevent slippage and prevent, you know, erosion and control stormwater. This is an attempt to make it more specific in the city's overall intention to try to preserve the topography of our area. And I think Mr. Broadhurst would like to talk to us about this as well?
Greg Broadhurst, 14 grand of a pardon ahead. I will probably clarify, I said that before. But actually, this is this evening, and I wish I got it again before. I did send an email out to Laogazi, who I spoke to before, with amending Title 27 specifically, 270205, erosion sediment control. Which in its original, in its original wording, references a document, which is, which was called Waters Management and Sediment Control for Urbanizing Areas, Soil and Conservation Service, U.S. Department of Agriculture, March 1987. That document has subsequently been subceded by another publication by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Division of Soil and Water called Rainwater and Land Development. Publication in 2006. And I sent an email, I copied all of you, the email that I sent to Laogazi earlier this evening. And that basically was a request to update the reference in this particular section, Athens City Code 270 type 0205, to reference the updated document that is, that's been in the 2006 publication, which has all the current standards, measurements, and criteria. So I've sent the reference out to you. I don't have, I printed out a copy for myself. This is, this I believe will take in all accounts, as I've read it. And actually, the Service Safety Director had told me today in an earlier conversation that she does have a copy of that. So if you get a chance, I would hope that you take a look at that and use that, that document or that publication as the baseline of reference, as originally referenced in the first paragraph of 27.0205, Erosion and Sediment Control.
Thank you.
Any questions? And, you know, you can go to the OD on our website and obtain a copy via a download if you register with OD in our Division of Surface Water. Division of Surface Water basically enacts the policies of what used to be called the Soil and Conservation Service of the USDA. We have a contract, as you probably well know, with the, with NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Service. And they will also assist you as well if you need any, need access to that. If you don't want to download it, they probably have a copy, I'm sure. I think Laogazi would say more about it if he wants. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions?
A lot of times, if there are some very specific technical recommendations, instead of writing that all into our city code, we reference kind of the industry standard document for that. So if we are referencing an out-of-date document, it would make sense to make that change. Paula, did you have something?
I did speak with Kathy Bobo of the Soil and Water Conservation District today. That's one of the three training items she wanted to accomplish this year. And that was indeed to update this ordinance, the land development ordinance, to reference, you know, the correct publication. And I suppose any other recommendations, like what you're reviewing tonight, so.
Great. Well, that would, if you have the particular citation that we should use for that, that would be great.
Okay.
Mary Wallace?
So possibly get a copy of the email that you forwarded to us?
Yes, absolutely. So if, we do have some additional information. Ray Hazlitt, while he was in, I don't know if it's when he was Assistant Service Safety Director or while he was Service Safety Director, but he did provide some additional documents about land development that I think are in the council office. So if anybody wants to look more in-depth into that, there are some, there is some more information available there. But I know this is kind of a new topic and I figured we should just get people thinking about it. So, comments, discussion? Nancy?
I was wondering, actually seeing Ron in the back made me think about it. When we were doing this before, we had a committee that included soil conservation, some council members, some administration members, and, you know, maybe some users of the land development ordinance, all with opinions, and have some discussion. I mean, I think it takes time, but in the long run, you could have an engineer go and do it. But I'm not sure that they would know how it's applied, how it's interpreted. So I think we ought to consider having a committee. They eventually convinced me to vote for it. Took me a while to go that way. Took us out in the middle of winter, made us walk up the downhills. Finally, we did it. And I must admit that it's not enforced the way I thought it was going to be enforced, so.
But we can always improve.
Yeah, I think the appointment of a task force or committee would really be helpful for the discussion because then we'd have different viewpoints, we'd have different people's expertise.
Especially users.
Yeah. And I think this is good timing to see this come forward because this is what we've been talking about as the city comprehensive plan improves, what are the ordinances we need to put in effect to help implement it? So this is a good first, one of the first steps.
So do we want to ask the Comprehensive Plan Review and Advisory Commission to take a look at this? Or do we just want to have a specific task force, get somebody from Soil and Water Conservation, the Service Safety Director, a council member, or two, I would say, one or two of the folks from this ad hoc citizen committee that has been working on this? And then ask for somebody from the chamber to either talk to a local developer or somebody who's had to kind of work with our existing ordinance? Does that sound like a good composition?
How about Richard Kirk? Or Bill Bias? I think that there is some application, that people that have had, you could ask Kirk about it and...
I just found out today
Maybe Kirk.
That we have now, in the project I'm responsible for, broken the $100,000 mark in engineering cost to meet the needs of the hillside ordinance. And we are located next to the river.
You're in a flood plain, it's all flat.
Uh huh. But the water that comes down from the other side of Columbus Road and the engineering that has accounted for all that. So I was just utterly amazed to find out exactly the implications, financial implications of that has been. And that's not counting how much we have spent with Burgess and Nyckel because they're also paying that side. And I basically have two engineers that seem to be filing papers against each other. So, you know, the implications are tremendous.
Yeah, he needs to be heard. I think also Burgess and Nyckel.
Sure.
Burgess and Nyckel also, maybe could give some, if not, you know, say where they, well, maybe not. It would cost us too much money. But, you know, I don't think we want to say it's up for grabs. So I don't say chamber generally, I'd say people who are users.
Right.
Who aren't represented by the chamber necessarily, but could be if they're supposed to be.
Well, kind of like the group that worked on the flood plain issues. You know, just a specific task force to really delve into those issues.
Some of our best work has come from these. You look at wellhead protection, flood plain work, both of them are up to date and much better than they were.
Right. Well, who else would like to take this on? Okay, I'll ask folks, you know, after the meeting. Where I can twist arms. Okay. So we will work on this a little bit and bring it back. That's all I have. Are there other miscellaneous for planning and development?
I have a small question before Paul starts. I was, I was reading the paper, I was reading what Casey wrote about the Planning Commission because I couldn't go. And I was wondering if, just as we're talking about that one...
Woke her up.
Mentioning her name in public. And I was struck by the comment about, you know, they have to do, about the noise. And I guess that I wanted to assert that that zone is a transitional zone between the downtown area and the residences. And it was designed as such. And it was, hours of operation, other things which have been ignored at times, were designed to stop noise at State Street, or at least reduce it so that by time it got to the hill. And it was just, you know, that's just part of the way it was designed. And some of those things disappeared out of the ordinance. Who knows how with strikeout and so on. But I just want to affirm that with the two Planning Commission members that are here, that we aren't necessarily asking them for help on the noise ordinance, but just that buffer area. And I think you know that already. Yeah?
Concerning that, usually if you're going to have a buffer area, you're going to a residential. Would you be going down zone to B1 rather than B3?
I didn't zone it the first time. I didn't revise, I was part of the appendix taker orders and revised it the second time. And you were there too. And you know how clueless we were by the time we got the strikeout back. We need somebody professional doing this job. Okay. I'm through, Randy.
Was that your question or do you have something else?
What I want to bring up is, I want to get some authorization to enter contract with Intellaway for the tower, use of our tower. I've got some draft lease agreements. I'd say they're just draft, I'll pass them out if you wish. We, I gave the authorization to start working on the towers. That gives us a short window if we want to deal with Intellaway or anybody else to get on the tower. If you wish, I can pass out the drafts. I took some of Nancy's recommendations, she was the one who had the most to say about it.
That was because I talked to Ron.
I know.
Forrest.
And I'll tell you, I started out with about three different versions of leases, tried putting legalese in, loomed it out to about 12 pages, and then decided to go back to what you were talking about. So it's down to four.
Mine is one.
I know.
We've been provided with, or at least I have gotten a copy of sample code around wireless telecommunications facilities?
That's one of the four versions I have.
Okay. Before we enter into a specific lease, should we have a discussion about general policy and look at the code? Or should we?
City's exempt from its own laws.
You're talking about our cell tower? We're exempt from it in theory, yes. If we, we don't have any law code right now in place. What I'm trying to do is get an authorization to enter into a contract with somebody else.
Under city utilities, you're not allowed that question.
Sure. Do you want a copy of the lease I sent to you electronically, or how do you want that? Hard copy?
I'm assuming from your statements that just these are fairly time-sensitive when you... To look at it now?
In theory, the tower, the discussion I had with Newcomb is that the tower's been designed to have a certain amount of transmitters on it, whatever Intellaway gave us at the time. We went with that. If Intellaway does not enter a lease, the tower will be overdesigned but otherwise adequate to keep going. That was a discussion I had. Right now, they have stuff on our old tower. And we were trying to talk to them the past couple of months. And actually, I was the one holding it up because I was trying to put a lease together. Does that answer your question? Are you, you're asking time-sensitive? Yes, it is.
So then I would suggest that you pass these out and we could look at them and maybe bring it up at next meeting?
I can send it to you electronically if you choose to, so you can augment it on your calendar. The last page for information, it's all Nancy's suggestions, plus your land, living security deposits. Well, there's, one of the copies had a security deposit in its wording. And as I say, it goes up to literally what you have there as well as another 12-page document. I think there's enough copies there.
Okay.
And I give it to you just as a work in progress, only a draft, as you can see from the top. I started with lots of legalese and tried cutting it down, but somewhere along the line, Pat will have to add all the legalese stuff.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that once you've had a chance to make whatever changes you're going to make, just to make sure I could submit it to my office and allow me to review that for form with enough lead time before I get it into the council.
Okay. Probably while I was doing, start talking to Intellaway and let him know that this isn't in train. Just because, again, the tower, we want to have the tower actually up and running by April, but it has to do with climate as well, weather as well as other things. Part of the other issues of leases, there's a whole, the whole series of leases include everything from subcontracting to elements of actual use, terminology of use, what could and couldn't be used, insurance liability, act of God liability. So it was fairly convoluted, which I took most of that out of there. Again, what I did is I went back to Nancy's bullet points and said, okay, what do we need, what we don't need. And you'll have to excuse me because I'm not a composer of this type of stuff. That's why I'm looking at you guys to, you know, seven set of eyes or many more and go from there. And I will send it to you electronically if you want it. But again, I've been procrastinating on it just because I've been trying to get a perfect mix. And you know that's not possible from just me alone.
Nothing perfect.
Does anybody here wish to speak to us on this topic? I'm sorry, Ilahu.
Were there any other companies other than Intellaway that have shown an interest in this area? And how are we going to decide which ones we allow, which ones we don't? Precedents from the local companies? Or would anyone be free to bid for this type of a lease?
My take on it right now is that since these guys are there first, I'm interested in talking to them. Most of us, we're just, we're going to take down the tower that their transmitters are on, regardless of the status of what they're supposed to have there or not. The question arises is when you say, okay, we're going to add more transmitters. The way I understand from Mr. Newcomb or the Newcomb companies that every time you go and add a transmitter, you really have to have a whole... go and add a transmitter, you really have to have a whole redesign or re permitting system for your tower. So in other words, you could actually play out the scenario that you need to add a transmitter, and now you have to redesign the tower. So again, time constraints, I want to get this up and running for the, because the clock is ticking and the bills are going up, as you know. If the pricing and everything like that, everything is up, you know, anything I've missed, anything you think is redundant, just, you know, let me know. And as I say, I can send it to you electronically, so you can play on electrons instead. But I say preference-wise, there's no, I haven't made any decision except what's there right now. And with the idea, I'm trying to get this up and running. I will tell you that there's elements in my administration, Sir Safe Director included, and a fire chief who thinks that nothing should be up on our towers. There's, you know, that this is a, you know, a necessary element, you know, should be restricted, no different than our water plant or anything else. You know, bad use of words in that sense, I guess. But same time, the idea is that this is a, this is essential service for the city functioning, and therefore, nobody should be on it. And that's, that's rude. Go ahead.
The tower was built and has equipment from Newcomb, which is dealing with our internal communications?
Yes, telephone communications.
For all city offices and emergency services?
Yes.
Potentially monitoring water.
And this is why I'm coming to you for authorization, and that's why I bring it up.
Right. So this isn't a question of somebody just seeking to use our right of way, they're seeking to have this really on our city infrastructure for our internal?
Yes. Do you want to add anything? No?
I have weighed in to the mayor, in addition to, with other city personnel, regarding the concern for the security for the system. And then the other issue that Councilmember Gosny brought up about if you start to let one, how do you stop another? And I can just see the snowballing effect. It was indeed designed because that business was already in place. We did take the step to allow them to provide information that if they were going to be on the tower and have that information, so it was engineered. I view it as a risk.
The, the balance is, do we want to assist a company, any company, from adding broadband to the southeast Ohio versus the use of the city property as well as essential services being possibly impaired? Again, these are balances that I want more heads than myself to deal with.
Hi, Mr. Broadhurst. I've brought this issue up before in relation to communication radio service towers and their environmental impacts. Not to mention the fact that, I really can't say that. I've, I've done business with certain businesses and they haven't got back to me with the technical details that I wanted to know about. I, I personally object of having any CRS tower in the R1 zone. You understand what I'm saying? If you go to the comprehensive plan, it outlines very specifically placement of such facilities. And this is common practice throughout many cities in Ohio. I don't have the references with me right now because this is just right off the top of my head. I can, I absolutely object to any co-location of any other transmitters on the tower. I am a ham radio operator, by the way, so I'm very sensitive about something called RF energy that exceeds the necessary emissions that are necessary for operation, affects human health, and also the, the well-being of the community. And not, besides being a security issue. I would say that another sighting would be more appropriate. If you check, like I said, if you check the ordinances of other towns our size, Xenia for one, Miami University, the town that it's located in. CRS towers are not permitted to be located except in industrial zones. And so it should be in our code as well. I would suggest that we set an example and find the most appropriate place to set, to cite this tower, to regulate the sighting of any future towers and require co-location in areas which do not affect human health. Now, this has been documented recent, much more recently. If you go to the communication radio service websites, there, there are a lot of lawsuits that are happening right now because of RF emission-related diseases, including brain cancer. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I understand the issue needs to be attended to immediately to meet the service needs of the city, but I think it needs to be located in a more appropriate location due to health, welfare, and security issues. Thanks.
Thanks, Greg.
Anyone wishing to speak to council on this issue? How do you committee members want to proceed with this?
The lease needs a lot of work. I think the law directors, all of us is going to have to spend some time with it or before, really, it can come before a vote.
Okay. Can we send that to you?
Oh, I've got it.
Excellent. Okay. Let us know when you've got something for us to look at. Any other miscellaneous for planning and development? Is that where John? Thanks.
And we'll go ahead with-
And we'll do the, and then we have students from the cleanup committee after the statue, so.
Okay, sure.
They're not on the agenda, but I know they want to talk.
We're going to move ahead with Community Issues Committee. At our regular meeting last Monday, Mr. Goldsberry, Philip Goldsberry, I believe, came and spoke to us about the possibility of moving a historic statue of Hebe, which is now located at the water plant, to a location that was suggested would probably be at the Athens Community Center. Mr. Goldsberry is back this evening to talk to us and maybe have some comments from, from council regarding this proposal. It looks to me as though there are several people here also to speak about this. I will just remind everybody that council rules allow three minutes of, of time for each person to speak. We will need to be timing this to move along. Also, if somebody has already said what you were going to say, please just say, "I support Mr. Jones or Ms. Smith," however. Mr. Goldsberry, would you like to go ahead and, and speak to us again, please? Remind everybody what the proposal is?
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Phil Goldsberry, 78, 80 something, Beechville Ridge Road, Athens. What I want to talk about this evening, just to elaborate a bit on what we talked about the other night, was the relocation of Hebe to the community center. I would make quick reference to an article that appeared in, excuse me, in The Messenger, which goes to quite a length of yellow, yellowed it, where there's comments been made that there are people that think that, that she cannot be moved from there. To address that, without going into all of that, Drennan Goldsberry, 7280, and I will read from this, it's his original letter of resignation, not resignation, of retirement. And he says, "The citizens of Athens, or anyone else interested, have always been invited to visit, to plan, to view, and enjoy this old work of ours. I'm sure future water department superintendents will be willing, in case of important historical events, to carefully move and exhibit this fragile statue for the enjoyment of interest of people." Strong implication there from my, from the superintendent, who as you all probably know now is my uncle, that this could be moved. Now, from that basis, I won't go into the Messenger article, which talks about it not being able to be moved. But to say that that seems to be, if it, if something's happened in ensuing years, then whoever is aware of that should make it clear so that people will know what they're dealing with. Second thing I'd like to address to you, I have a letter here that I'd like to read to you in centauri, it's from Phyllis Cuckler. She was Drennan Goldsberry's daughter, who is here in this area and has been for many years. She cannot be here tonight, but she says, "Dear Phil, in close to some additional information about Hebe's restoration, I'm so pleased that you have asked Athens City Council to move Hebe to the community center where she can be seen and appreciated by the public. Dad was always very proud that he was able to be a part of the old statue's restoration. In fact, he used to talk about her as though she was a live person. It would be nice if Dad and Carol Riley could receive some recognition for their work. As you recall, in your involvement, it was a lengthy and painstaking project. I will keep my fingers crossed that City Council proves your request. If you need another voice of support, don't hesitate to call me, Phyllis." Just to make that clear, that she's the only daughter of V.H. Goldsberry that still lives in the area. Second daughter's lived, lived out of state for a number of years. I'm running short on time. Today, we went down, several, several of us went down to the center. Can I go just a little bit more?
Of course.
Thank you. We went down to the, to the water treatment plant. Mark Gagliano, Mike Knoll, other folks that were with us, to look at the statue. And Mark had with him Gary Skaggs, who's an employee of his, and they have looked it all over and they think it can be fairly readily moved. And Drennan's thing says it could be. So we've got the expertise available, we've got funds available to take care of the costs involved in it. We've got a place available where she can go to. And based on that, we think council, or the committee could recommend to council that they authorize the relocation of her, and we think it'll come off very finely indeed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Goldsberry?
Yes.
Since you made the original proposal, I noticed that there's some council members who looked as though they wanted to ask some questions, maybe before you sit down.
Okay.
Were there council members with questions, or was I just reading that wrong?
Okay.
Short one. Just quick and easy. Where would the money come from to move this?
There have been people stepped forward from the community who are willing to donate the funds, take care of it, to take care of the costs involved. Now, I've been reassured of that by private individuals who say the money's there to be, to, to spend to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not right now.
Thank you.
Other members who wish to speak about this subject? By the way, it's one of the first times we get to see our timing system at work, so.
Well, I'll talk quickly. My name is Mark Gagliano. I'm the owner of a local company called Estate Lyons Marble and Granite Arts. For the last 11 years, I've been quietly selling marble sculptures and fireplaces and architectural products made of carved stone from my little warehouse on Dutch Creek Road. And I'm not sure, there's a lot of conflicting information about this particular statue, but there's some brief research tells us who the original artist was for this. It's a reproduction, it looks like. But the original artist's name was Dane, his name was Berthold Turevalson. And he was a neoclassicist sculptor who was quite famous. And it looks like this sculpture was donated to Louisiana State University as well. And I have here some architectural drawings, as well as some details on the other statue that was, was donated. You know, I'm in the, the business of selling marble sculptures, so I move a lot of sculptures all the time, and I have for, for quite some time. And, you know, we can look at the sculpture, and we can see that it's been very carefully rebarred to the floor, but technologically, the problem of dissolving, you know, making epoxy not as strong as it would be is dependent on temperature. So there are ways to heat it or cool it to pop the bond that is there. That's not feasible, it's certainly possible to saw the thing right off at the base, it can be done. And I have extensive experience with diamond tools, and, you know, we can, we can make a rig to take it down without destroying the, the floor. Just wanted to show some pictures. This is the original sculpture done in 1804. And this is the copy, a copy of the sculpture that was made for Louisiana State University. They took down the original zinc sculpture, which was rather fragile, a replacement of a cast iron sculpture. And as well, here in the upper right hand, you can see the original design for a base that stood under the one at Louisiana State University. We didn't receive the base here. It looks like the sculpture based on some, some paper that I read about the zinc sculptures that were being made at this time. The, the company that did the restoration of the one for LSU discovered that it had been made by a New York firm, and we even can figure out the foundry that it was made in. So I'm not sure why the sculpture was originally vandalized, but I definitely support moving it to where it can be seen. I do think we need to recognize the conservators, we can't leave a gaping hole in the floor of the water department. We need to do something to make that a clean removal. And I'd like to be involved in that project. I want to pass around this picture of the original sculpture that was at LSU that shows the join lines for this kind of zinc sculpture, which are typical, as well as the other sculptures which inspired this sculpture, as another famous neoclassicist sculptor. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Our electronic version of the book here.
Mark, um, what, how much do you imagine it might cost to place it in the new location in some context, or with plexiglass?
My company does a lot of installations. We, we have some significant installations, you know, under our belt, and we carry special insurance for moving sculptures and for installing sculptures of all types, usually marble sculptures. But I personally imported cast iron and bronze sculptures from both China and from Thailand. I have a lot of experience setting these things, have a lot of experience working with epoxy, a lot of experience working with diamond tools. We would need to take a better survey of what's there. They've surrounded the sculpture with a little low wall which serves as a small fountain. I suggest this is replaced. I was walking around it with an employee who's done a lot of marble and granite installations for my company, and he really knows his way around how to move things. And, you know, we think we can probably pop the epoxy by heating it with special heaters. It's not an inexpensive project. Also, the, the restoration to the sculpture is probably historically interesting, and I think, you know, if we could move this sculpture, if we can pop the bond at the bottom, that's great. It becomes a simpler job. If we can't, we need to build a special rig to take the sculpture off at the floor. That's certainly technologically possible as well. We would do it the same way we cut big blocks of stone. You do it with a diamond coated, diamond beads on a wire, and you set up a special rig, and we would slowly move it under the sculpture, and at the end of that, there would be no sculpture. But there would also be no little cute wooden, or cute brick waterworks around that. You know, fountains are another thing that my company does. We've done three-tier marble and granite fountains for people, and we've installed them, and we know about the plumbing and so on. I think anything we remove there needs to be replaced with something. And this is a way of also bringing the folks, the water department, into the project and, and recognizing them for their role in the preservation of this important part of our civic history. And just as a side note, I've been walking by the water department since I was a little kid, peering in the window, and my father told me that this is some of this story. I know there's some history that she may have come from France. Well, that's not what the research that I've done seems to indicate. The statue of justice up here on the courthouse is of better quality sculpture than this one. This is a zinc copy made by a foundry about 45 or 50 years after the original artist's death. If it were an original, it'd probably be a masterpiece, because there are just a few of them. One is at his particular museum in Copenhagen. Turevalson is the, and, you know, there's some, his contemporary was Canova, who did some fantastic images that everybody would know of Venus and of Jason. With your permission, I'll pass around some, some pictures y'all could look at. For example, there were two major artists of the neoclassicist era. So-called neoclassicist because it took as inspiration the Greek myths and the Greek statues from ancient Rome. And, you know, both, the two greatest artists of this movement were considered by, by many to be either Canova or this guy Turevalson. And they both made copies, they both made their own versions of Hebe. Here's Canova's, who's a little bit older than the Dane. They both were making these sculptures in Rome, and they were making them out of the best white marbles, so.
Obviously, you have a great deal of information to lend to this discussion. We have still some more people we need to hear from, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you have a quick question?
Thank you. I did. And thank you, Mark, for presenting and sharing your-
And thank you, Mark, for presenting and sharing your expertise with us. I guess one question I would have too, if we were to move it, knowing that it has some value and some worth, in your professional opinion, do you think that this is a worthwhile endeavor? And then, do you think that we can adequately install it and protect it at its new location so that it is free of vandalism or properly?
Yes. Let me address both the previous question and your question.
Sure.
It is a doable project. It is not a simple project because of the work that's been done, but it's certainly doable. My company could provide a bid to do it. I would need to take some, I would need to do that with some consideration, and it would take some time for my company to do. Do I think it's a worthwhile thing? Art is made for people to enjoy. I have a six-month-old and a two-year-old. I want my children to be able to see this important part of our civic history. Let's enclose it in a beautiful glass case and put it in someplace where it can be protected. Believe it, if a little bit of damage occurs on the base of the sculpture, we can prop it up, and it's still historically interesting. I don't think we can afford to damage it. And if it's moved carefully, it wouldn't really, it wouldn't, the chances of doing so are slim. And even so, the thing is soldered together with household solder. The process of restoration is something that my company could take on. Not only that, it looks like the thing could use a new spray paint and probably to have a couple of its ripples removed. And I understand there are a couple cracks. I'd love to do it, you know? I would do it as my contribution to our town. But, you know, I think if it were standing with a beautiful glass case, we could source on the Internet at a reasonable cost. Moving this thing would be no small task, but certainly doable. And my company could take it on. We'd have the thing, you know, out of there in a week. We would take 30 or 45 days to carefully examine every seam, re-solder it if necessary, re-put it, possibly even provide a mount or base, which we would have made in China, might take longer. You know, we could provide a more historically accurate presentation of the sculpture, but I wouldn't do that. I would put it in a glass case as it is. And I would provide, you know, a suitable substitute for the water department as our thank you for them actually finding the head of this thing and putting it back together so it can stick away. And if you look at what they've done, I've seen images of Hebe on the Internet now from all angles, and they did a great job putting it back together. It's not what we consider a professional restorer's job, but, you know, I shook both their hands with admiration and of them having the impetus to have some forethought. As for the water department holding on to this thing like it's their property, I believe these are, you know, public employees who are subject to the will of council. And furthermore, you know, I don't see that the opposition is really justified. I also don't think we can leave a gaping hole in their floor, and I really wanted to make that point. We need to replace it with something that's appropriate.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Does anybody else have anything to say regarding the possibility of moving this?
Hello, I'm Beverly Schumacher. I'm representing the Athens County Historical Society. I was at a meeting this afternoon where we were discussing Hebe and thought that it definitely needs to be moved. We would like very much to have it placed where the public can see it. We talked about the recreation center. We talked about libraries. And we also want to make it known that the museum is available.
Thank you.
Nobody ever mentions Art West. Art West, do you?
Mention it.
Well, I just did.
I don't think any...
I was wondering why nobody thought of Art's West as an option.
As a Republican, for you.
A sort of place. People aren't as familiar with it, maybe?
Maybe not.
I'm hearing some murmurs that it was made up. He is publicly accessible as someplace like the community center, although one could pose the same effect as the other one.
Did I see somebody over here?
Ron Chapman.
Mr. Chapman, if you want to speak, please.
I'm Ron Chapman, 7074 Leamaster Road, the Plains. I really don't have a horse in this race. But after 22 and a half years of a prior life being here with the city of Athens, at least I thought my two cents' worth might be appropriate here tonight. I certainly don't want to take and make any disparaging comments to any others that have made comment here tonight about this, but I do want to say this. With regard to how Hebe is hooked to the ground tonight, I can tell you that I was the guy responsible for putting her to the floor, and she's pretty well affixed. And I think it would be foolish for me to try and set her tonight and try and convince you that she can't be moved. Of course she can be moved. I think with some reasonable care, she could be. But I do want to say that the reason that Hebe was attached to the floor, and I happen to be one of those few that are still around that was there when she was in bits and pieces on top of the garage down at the water treatment plant, and I saw the foot missing, the hand missing, and saw the fact that Carol Riley actually manufactured those parts out of zinc jar lids. Now, I watched him doing that. And so there was some vested interest in that whole process. And in the process of doing that restoration, I think that there is a feeling and a sentiment at the water treatment plant of those that are there presently and those that have been there in the past. And I was there for some 15 years before moving elsewhere in the city. There's a fond attachment to Hebe. At the time, she was called Ruth. Drennan Goldsberry referred to her as Ruth. And then we later found out she was Hebe. But the point that I would make here tonight is twofold. It would be wrong for me to argue that she can't be moved. Certainly, she can be. It would also be wrong for me to say that, you know, council shouldn't be dealing with this issue. Certainly, it's your purview to deal with issues that come before you as the public brings to your attention. But I think there's a root issue here. Drennan Goldsberry, who was really the founder of Athens Water Treatment, beginning in 1958 construction of those plants, he oversaw the restoration of that statue. And had he not done so, this conversation wouldn't even be occurring tonight. The letter that Phil Goldsberry read from just a few moments ago, I was the recipient of that original, and I do have that letter still. And Drennan Goldsberry told Clyde Ely, who was also a water plant operator at the time, and myself, who in his retirement became superintendent of the water plant, he said, "Boys, take care of this statue and keep it here at the water plant." That's what he told us. And so to that end, since that time, we have made every effort to do, just as Drennan Goldsberry said. And that was to keep that statue there because it could be protected at the water treatment plant. Public ownership of that statue, I think, probably ceased the time that it was thrown in the garbage. It perhaps recovered some of that public ownership in the fact that there is public investment of time in her restoration. So to that end, I think she's probably perhaps a public property now. So I would conclude, without taking any more time, that I forwarded an open letter to all of council members. I sent that via email. I offered here again tonight, you know, one thing that would, you know, at least in my mind, be something one might consider is, Drennan Goldsberry made a very big contribution to the city of Athens in the many years that he was here before his retirement in 1980. And we heard a letter from his daughter that was supporting the public display. And I, you know, I really can't argue against the public display of that statue. I can't argue against the fact that she could be properly removed and could certainly be restored. When I saw her in the multiple pieces and the pieces missing out of her, and I saw how it was crafted, that those pieces were replaced, you know, Carol Riley was not an expert artisan, but he certainly made the statue look a lot better than she was before. So I would leave you with this. You know, I think that the statue is probably placed where it's at. That's my opinion. If you decide otherwise, she certainly can't be moved. I would argue strongly that she be left where she's at just for personal reasons. I have that attachment to her. And had given Drennan Goldsberry my commitment that at least on my watch, she would stay there, and she did. As I said at the start, I no longer have a horse in this race. But at any rate, I would urge you to consider one other thing, though, in your deliberations about Hebe in the process of this whole thing. What would be wrong with having a Drennan H. Goldsberry Water Treatment Plant? And let Hebe be where she should be. Your decision.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Anybody else want to speak about the subject right now? Council members?
Where angels fear to tread. A very good friend of mine is Mary Dials, who brought this up several years ago. And then, not too long ago, at Rotary. And Mary is a great lady that does a lot of wonderful things for our city that I think the world of. Tonight, before us, we have an embarrassment of riches of service safety directors. There are three of them in the room. Ron Chapman was newly appointed to the post right after I got elected to city council eight years ago, I believe, or eight years ago, 18 years ago. Going on 20 years ago now, Ron. So we used to lock horns in this room periodically. And Ron has been a great public servant for a long time, and it's great to see you back here, Ron. After Mary talked to me, I thought I would like to go down to the water treatment plant and see the statue again. I saw it a number of years ago. But I wanted to talk to the employees of the water treatment plant about this because I couldn't get over, it seems like such a no-brainer, let's move this thing where everybody can see it. The water treatment plant is locked up, and you can't get in there to see it anymore. But after going down there and spending some time with Crystal Kennard and the other employees of the treatment plant, there are some very deep-seated feelings about this and the work that was done and the things that they, the way that they feel about this. And I knew that this was going to become one of those issues before council. It's just one, it has all of the makings. The statue probably is worth a lot of money. It is, you know, it's just one of those kind of things that the press picks up on and that I probably got more phone calls from. I've gotten a letter tonight from Alan Goldsberry, I believe your cousin, or speaking to it. And of course, in the last couple of weeks, more about this than anything else. Like all issues, the first opinion that I have of it is not really probably where I always end up on it. But I think that the feelings of the employees down there should be given some real cognizance. Good luck, council, on your vote on this one. This is not going to be an easy one.
It's really new, come on.
I will see to it that everybody's here before I would allow the vote to be placed. I do not want to be the tiebreaker on this one.
Members, comments, questions?
Thank you. My concern, one that I have about the possible removal and placement in a new venue, is that generally sculpture should be something that's viewed in the round. And I would have a concern that if it might be placed, as Mark alluded to, in a glass case, that it might only be two-dimensional then. So that would be a little bit of a concern I have, that if it was removed, that its placement would be such where it could be viewed three-dimensionally in the round. But we also know that value-wise, it's not necessarily the best J for, it's not a masterpiece, but, so that might be one issue that would be something I would want to view or look at or discuss.
The thing I had heard about proposed last year led me to believe that it would be a 360-degree view.
Okay.
But that's to be discovered later, I believe. Mr. Phillips?
I'm not trying to commit this to death, but I would mention again that we did approve a public art policy when we created the Athens Municipal Art Commission. And there's a policy for commissioning and displaying and decommissioning public art in the city. And it seems to me that we should ask the Municipal Arts Commission to consider this and give us some guidance or recommendation. You know, we do have a commission that, you know, specifically is concerned about public art in the city.
Anybody over here?
I think that would be an excellent idea to consult and get the art commission's approval. I also appreciate hearing Mr. Chapman's comments and the history and some more of the history from Mr. Goldsberry. And you're right, it's not going to be an easy decision. I also appreciate that you took the time to ask the water department employees.
I would encourage other members of council to do that. There's some deep-seated feelings on this one. There really are.
If you're going to add committees, why don't you also address it to the rec advisory board, since they drop them in the community center, then anyone has to say about it.
I have some advice from you, right?
Have some advice.
Thank you.
I would like to state that I wasn't consulted or apprised of the relocation to the community center location, where that proposal was.
Rick has it, huh?
Not that I have to, I can just let him know.
I was, as member Phillips suggests, going to ask to set up a committee, but I think it is true that we have several committees, commissions who are already operating. And I think maybe we ought to give some direction to both of them to look at this and broaden their investigation beyond just their four walls, but look at the water plant, look at engineering, et cetera, et cetera. If it would be okay with council, I will approach both the...
Rec advisory board.
Rec advisory board.
AMAC.
And municipal arts commission. Look at this and give, come back to us with recommendations within a reasonably short time. I mean, she's been there for quite a while. She is protected. She's not in danger. But I don't want to drag this on until snowfalls. Although in May tonight. Okay. Given that, we are going to seriously pursue this idea. We're going to ask some of our community members who work with us in these two areas, the recreation area and the arts area, to give us some guidance before we go any further. So I hope that we will be soliciting opinions from you all soon.
Last question. Is this really a legislative item in general? And the reason why I ask that is because part of the dialogue goes in terms of service safety directors in charge of resources and space and infrastructure. And does this include part of that?
I would feel that it was a mixed bag. It appears that if we went ahead with this, we would be accepting some gifts, which, with regards to the cost of doing this, of building a case, it seemed to me that council did get involved in those issues. But clearly, the service safety director has a lot of discretion here, too.
I would just encourage folks to actually look at the public art policy that we do have, because I think that particularly given, I think there was some reference to a public artwork that was demolished, that there needed to be a policy of how we deal with public art. And we do have one in the city now. So I think, I don't remember the details, but I know that we do have a pretty specific process for decision-making about public art.
Advisory to council.
Okay.
Yeah. Give it the bottom line, as their advisory is to council.
Another set of advisories. Yeah, she's right about it. Let's see what they say, except most of them don't live in the city.
Okay. We're going to pass this on to some experts in the area, and hopefully we'll hear from them soon. We're going to move on in our discussion. Graffiti draft ordinance is the next thing on our agenda. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Right, I was asked to, to...
And thanks to everybody who came to speak on that issue.
Okay. I was asked to recognize some other people first. Remember Bane?
I just know because I was running over in my prep time, a man in the back row was going to give us a little answer. Talking about beautification, am I wrong?
Actually, hi, I'm Max Lerd. I just-
Max.
Name and address, please.
I'll make this quick.
Is that mine? Thanks, Max.
Thanks.
Hey, guys, how you doing? My name is Max Lerd, 366 Rochelle Avenue. I'm a senior here at the high university and resident of Athens. And I was also in charge of Athens Beautification Day along with Stephanie Stigaggs this year. I hope you guys enjoyed it. We definitely appreciate your support. The only reason why I was actually in the office was to pass out some certificates of appreciation to those who volunteered, and also thank you letters to the rest of the council. So, I just wanted to commend you on doing your civic duty and helping us with this this year. Also, I have one for Mayor Wile. I'm really here today, though, to support the community assistance. We're here to talk about a very important issue. So, if you don't mind, I'm going to-
We were going to go to him next, but you can go ahead and call on him.
Okay. Thank you very much, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lauren Elliott, and I live at 151 East Stage Street, and I'm a community assistant, like these other lovely people in the green shirts over here. And we're basically here tonight to echo a concern we've been receiving from the off-campus community about increased break-ins in our neighborhoods. I have a few testimonies from students, but in the interest of time, I'll just recap them, sort of read them to you. One is from a group of students whose home was actually broken into while they were there. Their laptop was stolen, along with some other really expensive items, and I can personally attest to the terrifying nature of having your home broken into while you're there. The second one is actually something that occurred while the students were over spring break, and this one is particularly important because they had a deadbolt on their door that wasn't working properly, so that had been kicked in. And then, they said even though their landlord has fixed the deadbolt, like, it's not really working properly still. So, our suggestion is to propose deadbolts that can lock externally and internally on all exterior, exterior doors, in the interest of safety, prevent future break-ins. And the reason why we suggest that is kind of a code thing, is because students and tenants can't really add locks to their doors without defacing the property. They'd be putting holes in the doors. Their landlords own the house, so it's not really the student's ability to do that. And they also can't install a lock to which the landlord doesn't have a key. Something we've been hearing repeatedly from students who've had their homes broken into is that they haven't heard anything back from the police department. And so, we feel that generally the best way to avoid that is to prevent the break-in to begin with, by having safely secured deadbolted doors. So, we thought we'd pass that concern on to you guys. That's about all I have.
Can you tell me roughly how much you think each of these will cost, uninstalled?
Um, any ideas, any ballpark figures?
Standard deadbolt at hardware store, ten or fifteen dollars.
Even less than that. I'd say about four or five dollars. And this should be a requirement of landlords who own the properties, that should be there.
You mean, you can lock it on the inside, but you leave your key in the lock?
They've got double-facing, double locks.
Is there any fire issue with this? Fire protection issue? Safety issue there?
Well, to my knowledge, my house personally actually has the deadbolted door, and it's not-
The faceplate's off, or something like that's going on?
It's just kind of the one that turns, and you can lock it with a key as well. It's just, it doesn't seem any more difficult to open than any other, like a chain lock, for example. So, in the case of an emergency, I don't think it would hinder a quick exit.
Obviously, questions?
Lauren and I met last week to talk about this, and we have, within the section of code that talks about rental permits, there is a section that talks about doors and windows, and within that, there's already a section about door hardware. So, it seems like it would be a very simple thing to amend our existing code. So, we even talked through some possible language. I didn't bring it tonight, though.
I had heard, I was approached by somebody just the other day, asking if we were going to be talking about deadbolts tonight, and I said I didn't know that it was going to be on the agenda. But that person had said that Student Senate had passed a resolution about this also. So, are you familiar with that resolution?
I'm familiar with the fact that Student Senate has passed a resolution. Stephen, who is our graduate assistant of our program, knows a little bit more of the details of the resolution as it impacts, because he's on the Senate Student Senate.
So, you're passing this along to us as part of, or in conjunction with, a Student Senate resolution also, which I guess they'll be passing to us sometime.
Right.
Okay. Maybe we have a representative here.
Are there any other questions I can answer?
Sounds like a great idea.
I would just like to add that I, too, have been approached by students, university students, that live in the first ward, that have had recent break-ins as well. So, it's a concern that's happening in our neighborhoods right now.
So, could the administration possibly, on your Wednesday meeting, throw this out and talk about it?
You'd have it staffed in terms of fire department and police?
And code?
And code, okay.
Yeah. I mean, if it's like garbage cans or things like that, maybe more difficult than, but things can change, right?
Things can change.
How about community policing, too?
Community policing.
How about some, the next, we should perhaps look at some police on the feed. It looks like they're-
What?
You know, just walking around. It's a different world on foot as opposed to in a car.
Well, we're-
Long-term, long-term.
Once we get the staffing up, we're up to, right now, we have three more to go.
Okay. I'll do my best with the H thing.
Yes.
That's, do you want to add that to the agenda, I think?
Okay. We'll do it after we get through with the-
Is this also, I know, Mike, the community assistance program has done a lot to educate students as they are living in the community, and so is this something that also we might, you know, along with amending the code, be doing some specific education along those items, or, you know, things about preventing break-ins? It might be a help.
We have done- Social Security member.
Nope. I was on the camera.
My name's Mike Hess, I'm the associate director for off-campus living at the high university, 350 Baker Center. My, we have done some newsletter that had some, an article about preventing break-ins, and we, we're not, we do think education's important. It doesn't negate, a deadbolt doesn't negate people employing a deadbolt, but we would like to give students the odd option to have a deadbolt on their doors. I think it's a responsible thing for people who rent properties in the community to provide that level of security. A keyed deadbolt on the outside, and even a turn knob on the inside would be our recommendation. So, all exterior doors would have a deadbolt that offers a little more security than just a knob, turn door.
Definitely.
Does that help?
Thank you. We have a representative from Student Senate?
My name's Stephen Exley, 64 East Stimson Avenue. I'm, I work in the off-campus living office as well as a graduate assistant, and I also have the pleasure of serving on graduate student government. And myself and my colleagues in Student Senate heard about the work that the CA's wanted to propose, and we wanted to voice our support for that. So, both bodies have passed a resolution supporting these changes, and I have copies for everyone. And that's all I have.
Thank you. At this point, we've asked the mayor to bring this up to the departments that would deal with this and get some feedback. I just want to say that within the last couple of years, we did have some deadbolts, new hardware installed on my front and back door, and it was a whole lot more than four or five dollars.
Yes.
Installation, even if you buy the object for five dollars, installation can jump it up to five dollars. So, um-
Somebody tell me the cost?
Yes, please. You can sit right there.
Okay. I really appreciate your observation about the cost, but I'd like to remind council that students pay a significant amount of rent in the city of Athens to live here. And I think a $25 or a $30 deadbolt is not an unreasonable amount of money to ask landlords to provide this level of security, increased security.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to just say that the cost was unreasonable. We've passed ordinances that have cost-
It's a hundred dollars.
A lot more than that, so we do agree that security is important and would support that. I just, I didn't want to leave the impression that it could be done for four or five bucks.
Somebody turn it to me.
It's also my understanding that the police department has been kind of encouraging people to lock their cars and lock their houses, because a number of the break-ins have been to cars that were unlocked and houses that were unlocked. So, you're requiring the deadbolts is one thing, but people actually, you know, dealing with their own security is something else that is going to have to happen if we're going to get a handle on this.
Definitely.
I'll put one quick plug in for the neighborhood and community associations, and Mike Hess, who works with off-campus housing, knows this because he's taken the time to meet with this group every month. But just for the Student Senate and students to be aware of, there are neighborhood associations in each of the neighborhoods. They meet on a monthly basis. They have quick access email to hundreds of citizens. So, I'd encourage you, if you're having problems or there's a problem area, the neighbors are equally concerned, and they'd like to cooperate and collaborate with you in any number of ways, so.
Kind of go back to what I started to say. We had asked the law director to look at some possible ordinances dealing with the graffiti problem that we've heard about from our neighborhood associations, and he has given us something to look at. We're going to propose a work session for later to actually discuss this, but I think he actually wanted to say a few words pretty quickly here.
I think that pretty well covers it. In the interest of brevity, I will just say that the original plan on this was going forward with some basic options on various issues. You know, when you say graffiti ordinance, that can mean any number of things, and most of that is outlined in those materials which I've given to everybody. As I got into it, I realized that it was really too complex to deal with, just, you know, going issue by issue in a meeting, and so that was my recommendation, was that a work session be scheduled so we can really have some opportunity, number one, to review these materials, and then, number two, to formulate some thoughts of our own. And certainly, my role in this is entirely advisory, and so I'm not trying to steer the conversation in one direction or another. And I think the best way to achieve that end is just to have a work session where we can let it all out on the table. And then, once I've got some direction, I can certainly, you know, provide some guidance and drafting language and things like that.
What kind of a timeline are you looking at?
What was the date that-
We were suggesting seven o'clock before the second meeting in May, which would be, I believe, the 19th, Monday, the 19th.
We have a couple of publishers a session being at seven. Could we possibly just meet a second night?
Well, we-
We could do most of Solid Waste, that Alana and I want to do, because it's nine o'clock, and we've got many things to do.
Three more committee meetings.
Well, that would be fine. We're, I think we're open to anything. We were trying, we thought council would prefer to skip another night, but maybe if we combined a couple of things, we could hit it on a Wednesday or something.
How about a week from this Wednesday?
Is Thursday better?
Thursday's better. I don't care. I'm retired. Except for Tuesday, I'm not going to Tuesday.
What about people being- Week from Thursday? I can't think that far ahead. What would that date be?
May?
May 8?
At seven?
Here at council offices?
Will you run panel? Or we'll, you on tape?
We'll find somebody that has a key.
I have one.
Okay. So, why don't we mark that down for Thursday, May 7, May 8 at seven o'clock. We'll have a work session about graffiti and Solid Waste.
Right.
I'll bring my break-in.
For your mark.
Okay. Congressman Bane, you had something you wanted to throw in miscellaneous about composting?
No, we'll just do that on that day.
Okay.
We're going to be-
That's Solid Waste.
That's Solid Waste, yeah. Who's next?
One miscellaneous item, is that okay? One thing I wanted to follow up on is about the door warden. It was, the conversation I had with council last time sounded like you didn't want to pay extra for in-city one, and the next thing after that is to address the county commission and see if they're willing to enforce their ordinances, their higher-advised code. And I'd like to actually bring this up. If you're not willing to put the money forward, the next thing to do is bring it up in an executive session, in terms of what we want to do next.
I'd spoken, Mayor, with you earlier today about this, and that was my recommendation, was that if there was still councils, well, that they did not want to look at reaching some kind of a settlement or some kind of an agreement with the county that would involve money. I would just recommend setting this down for an executive session, and I can kind of take us through the legal options that we may have. Just do that next Monday.
That's okay with you guys?
It's always, we can look at our options, Ed, Mary. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I had.
I mean, that's all I have, on community issues.
Utilities and Environment Committee are going to meet in combination on the 8th of May, but we have two things that we feel we have to do. I think we've talked to various members of the administration, service director, and so on, about this, and all, do you want to roll the contract, one on the other?
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead and say it.
Our past contract was a three-year contract, for a number of reasons, which we'll be speaking about next week at our joint meeting. I feel at least that it would be best to have a shorter-term contract this time, so that we have the possibility of looking at different changes. There are changes to, possibly changes to Uptown Collection. I've got some other ideas as well that I'd like to discuss.
And so, we'll put the request to renew the contract and roll it for a year, and increase the amount of money by about $80,000, because that's how much fuel's costing now, the diesel. And I'm going to talk about the second part of that, which is, how are we going to pay for it? And you notice that since we have the 1st of July, we're about to get rolling on this with our 30-day window. And so, what simply I would like to suggest, this is only going to pertain to those part of the garbage stream that would be residential and uptown that follow the code, following the code, that 04106 can increase everybody's garbage fees by $1 a month. And I've got to go and cost it out, but I'd like to have an ordinance up with that amendment in, with the franchise rates and everything raised accordingly. There will be some variation, you know, maybe some slight increases on rental units that are, you know, rooming houses and so on, but I've got it spelled out here, like 10 or more occupants, up to $16. We can probably fix that beyond that. Right now, it's $14. It isn't like we don't all know it. I was in, delivering some stuff, food stuff, this morning, and people were talking about how the gasoline prices had gone up. I mean, we said a couple of months ago, oh, well, we'll hit $4 by December, and here we are. I mean, diesel is definitely $4 right now. And there's no, there's no silver bullet here. I don't care what people say about summertime, no taxes on gasoline. That's not going to happen. I mean, we've got to face the new reality, which is higher fuel prices, and we've got to face it by paying the cost. So, I will have it up, get in and talk about it. We've got a very short time period, we'll go for the 1st of July.
The last time this came up, there was a proposal to try to figure out something that is more of a pay-as-you-throw, rather than an occupancy-based fee, so that it's actually based on the amount of trash that people are producing.
I agree, that's a really good idea. I mean, I would like to go back and have more education happen, but that's going to happen on Thursday, the 8th, because I've got a whole spiel on that. I mean, I- got a whole spiel on that. I mean, I think that when we, two years ago, there was much more recycling going on on Palmer Street and in Stewart Street. And today, I drove by there again, and piles and piles of garbage, but very little recycling. Now, you could say somebody stole all those Natty Light cans, but I don't know if that happened. So we have, but we have, we have had a diminution of our, of our participation, and I was hoping against hope that we would have that educational component. Debbie, you got me started, and I don't want to talk for an hour, so everyone agreed that we have to pay the bill, about $7,000 a month additional for diesel. Does anybody have a problem with that? We'll adjust the fees. Right now, our fees, the EPA was leaning on me because I was, I maybe still am the solid waste district head for planning or something like that. I can't remember the exact title. But they were, they were saying that the best fees in the state were gambeer, where they were paying $13.11. Well, look at us. We are going to be 650 and 250, the lowest ones, for roughly $9. So it's, we're doing well. And the upper ones will be commensurate, but the recycling rate will be 250. And I do agree, pay-as-you-throw, more education. I mean, people in the neighborhoods are doing it. We've got to get our people leaving this town believers and doing it right. But that's another time. On the 10th. We'll jump up and down now.
8?
8, 8, okay. Yeah, the 10th, I have to do something else. Thank you. At that point, I'd also like to discuss, maybe you guys can talk about collecting for bags of compost and twigs and other composting type of things. Now that we have a different set of circumstances, maybe we can do that.
Are you talking about charging for compost?
Yes, charging. Imagine that, not for people that want to have their leaves, grass, weeds picked up and so on. Okay? Thank you. I'm through, unless the mayor has miscellaneous. Do you have miscellaneous?
No, you first said it all.
I doubt that. Transportation, that's it. Transportation committee has four agenda items tonight, and I think these will go relatively fast. The first one is a transportation enhancement program. The street department director, Stone, let us know that the city of Athens has qualified for a grant program, and he will be submitting the application on May 1. And that will, what it will help is that this grant would augment the other two grants that we'll be paying for the Richland Avenue project. The grant will be approximately $1.3 million. And so this could really help, and it could save, help us and save quite a bit on the Richland Avenue project. Chris, have we authorized this? We have not. I'm just bringing it up, and it will come before counsel next week. May 1 is the deadline? May 1 is the deadline.
I'm hearing you need a special session.
Well, as-
They've allowed him to submit the application with the understanding that May 5 would be the date that-
They are okay without, without the ordinance being submitted. They can submit it separately, but thank you for asking.
There's a match.
Well, May 1, today. Yeah, just a few days away. So they'll be submitting that. And then, that means, yes, that we will have the ordinance coming up next Monday night for our consideration. And suspension.
And emergency costs.
And emergency. Okay, thank you.
You'll learn all of that.
I'll learn. I'm sure I'm going to learn. Second item is the Richland Avenue 682 design cost. As I mentioned last week at city council meeting, there will be a new appropriation ordinance that will be coming forward soon to pay for the second part of that design cost. At this point, we are waiting on the results of the environmental review, and part of that will also, if it's possible, to add in project components that would make it pedestrian and bicycle-friendly. And we're adding in the comments we received at the public forums, that that was very much an item of interest. Chris?
Yes.
I jumped up and down and talked about Danish at the meetings when we talked about this. And my understanding now is we only have two options, even though initially, we were assured that we would have a number of options. One of them is cheaper, that's the roundabout. The more expensive one is expanding the bridge width. And I don't remember leaving that committee with expanding the bridge width as an option. I think most people thought that was outrageous as an option, as I recall. Maybe only I thought it was outrageous, and I projected it all in myself, as members. But that would not be the first time I've done that. But on the other hand, I talked to the mayor about this, and he said, oh, you sound just like Mr. So-and-so and Ms. So-and-so. But if you have to have six lanes of traffic going from the bridge, it's the old raise the bridge, lower the river problem. And why don't we ask Ohio University to either pay the extra cost for the extra lanes, or whatever we're going to do, although we're down to only two choices, and that annoys me a little bit. But, or else have them stagger their arrivals and delays. I mean, why would you spend that much money not do, I'm going to rant, not do the potholes, not do things that need to be done, not do the neighborhood improvements for 15 minutes on either side of 5:00 and either side of 8:00? I mean, I know that some people came and talked, maybe always quite often the same people. I guess some of your colleagues actually have the same, same opinion, that maybe we should think about other ways and not spend an extra million for, or $2 million for additional lanes on that bridge. And I will say, I didn't go to the meetings because the whole process, to me, was annoying. And I wouldn't have made any difference anyway, because I think, well, I will say what I was just going to say.
Well, I appreciate the comments.
Well, I'm sorry. It's not directed at you, though, understand.
No, I understand that.
Councilmember Phillips?
I know that this intersection has been of great concern for a long time. It's been considered a failing intersection and a very dangerous intersection. But I think that it really was brought sharply into focus because of the tragedy in terms of, you know, pedestrian safety. I just think that that really got people thinking a lot about this area and how to make it safer. I would just have to echo what Nancy said about the idea of adding lanes, I think decreases pedestrian safety. So I wasn't, when we, when this discussion left counsel, I also thought that we were not talking about adding lanes, but we were talking about a redesign.
Well, I will follow up with street director Stone. And I do remember that Department of Transportation has provided some information, additional information after the public hearings, because I asked about the safety of the roundabouts, and they are, they are a safer alternative. You're traveling at a lower speed, and the seriousness of the accidents is lessened because you're traveling at a lower speed. Councilmember Butler, did you have a comment?
Thank you. I was just, thank you. I was just going to echo some of the things that member Phillips mentioned as well, as far as the safety of the intersection being a major issue rather than getting through the intersection quickly. Although, I do travel at intersection, that intersection daily, and there are delays at certain times of the day. But I think, knowing that there are a lot of concerns with safety and pedestrian crossing, that that would be more of my concern or issue to look at ways to improve, knowing also that we're trying to work towards a more pedestrian, bicycle-friendly community. Those are issues, I think, that are of concern.
So did you just say that we had alternates that were bicycle and pedestrian, as opposed to it being part of the main plan? I know you're not the one, and so if it seems like I'm being harsh with you, I don't mean for that to be-
Well, this is the transportation, the earlier transportation enhancement program? Is that what you're asking about that?
No, no, you were talking about bike and pedestrian.
Oh, I'm just saying, we want to do everything we can to incorporate bicycle and pedestrian safety.
Yeah, well, one of-
And use of transport.
Councilmember Nysley had requested Andy Stone to be here, and we came in his stead to be able to answer some of these. The, on the transportation enhancement grant, the option would be through, what he's basing the $1.3 million on, would be the 12 feet of shared-use path and the pedestrian tunnel. All of these things are still not decided until ODOT comes back, as Nysley was trying to explain, because you cannot choose a design until ODOT has evaluated it and then shows you what the environmental impact would be, and then they'll make a decision, which I think a meeting was been scheduled for early next week on that. Bottom line, and I know you're looking at, of course, the safety and the cost, if we don't do anything, Andy Stone has informed us, ODOT will, and we will not have input into what they do, and it will be for traveling vehicles, not necessarily the pedestrians. But because of the, that's how come we have so much money coming in from ODOT, is because it's been identified as an area that needs an upgrade.
Well, I hope you understand that my concern specifically was on the increased cost. And when Andy was here, I think he made us certain statements and promises, and I just wish he were here so I could grill them. And also, I've heard from my constituents who have said to me, why is there only pedestrian traffic on one side of the bridge? They don't like that one bit. And, you know, I, and there are people that went to your meetings.
Which is cost, again.
It's cost, I would imagine.
Well, I mean, you know, adding six lanes on the bridge is cost, too. I mean, let's get right on that.
Nancy, the rationale for having six lanes is because there's two designs. One design does not require extra lanes. That is the roundabout. A standard intersection will require more lanes for holding, for turning for both directions. I could understand, let's say, let's talk to you and stagger the traffic and make that work. But you still have 12:00, everybody goes out at noon, and that's still a conduit there.
Some of us go to class.
The fact is, this has been an issue since, what, 1999? I sat in McDonald's with the South Side Neighborhood Association, where Burris and Nyble said this intersection will fail in eight years, 10 years.
It's a classic example of engineer speak, because the neighbors were all angry at Burris and Nyble for saying it was a failed intersection. It couldn't get any worse. Lo and behold, it did. But, you know, the other thing is, I look at it and I say, you know, where, what happened to all those options we had, before all the Danish were served?
There weren't any Danish.
I know. That wasn't the answer I was looking for. Obviously, I fastened on that just to get attention.
Okay, the options are, is that this has been from ODOT to look at as a bad intersection. ODOT, by definition, is transportation, unfortunately, looks at vehicles. Again, we did have somebody, you know, killed on the, the bridge. We could actually, if, I brought it up to Andy, I said, okay, so let's just suppose we refuse the $1.5 million for the intersection and just go with a remake of the bridge. He says, well, ODOT will come in, and they'll do it for us, and we may not like what we see.
Yeah, and I-
Because they, they will be vehicles first, and then pedestrians second. I do not like the idea that we're going to end up with pedestrians on one side as well.
I mean, yeah.
But the fact is, unless we want to add another extra million to put a pedestrian bridge on the other side, one of those options, if you had gone, would see the standard intersection, which included one cantilever lanes outside the bridge, with the idea that the main constructed area would be for the traffic, then you'd have this extra walking pass on either side, or an extra bridge right through, going through the river, which, of course, you know, everybody started talking about mussels or something like that in the river. And how much it would cost-
Sheep knows.
What?
Sheep knows.
Well, the thing is, if we have the money to do to both sides, it would be nice to do. But I don't see it. If we want to get these things fixed or repaired to some level, we go with this. Or we can do nothing. I mean, that's always-
I'm not advocating doing nothing, and I want you to understand that one of our students was killed on the other Richland Avenue Bridge.
Yes.
It's Tim Skilia, and so it's-
And he's put an application in there for 2012. So if you're around 2012, you can, you can start talking about that. Because that's, that's the lag time right now. So if we step out of line right now, we say, we defer not to do this, we get back in line for 2012 or later.
I will make a suggestion. What I will do is convey, and I'm sure Paula will also convey, as city safety service director, the comments, and the mayor, while they meet weekly with, with director Stone, and we'll follow up and watch and continue to give input on this, on the design. I think it just behooves us to be as proactive as we can with the Department of Transportation, make the needs known, make the interests known, what would be the best scenario, maybe, and to try and consider the lanes on both sides. All we can do is ask, and maybe that's a feature of the, in the enhancement program.
Well, it's very tight. I mean, I look at the geography of the place.
Other comments on the Richland 682? The next item is the Franklin to Grosvenor slip, and-
Grosvenor to State Street, Christine.
Pardon me?
It's Grosvenor to, the slip is down to State Street.
To State, okay. Hopefully not, hopefully we'll have it repaired before then. And safety service director, Heran Mosley, is with us tonight to explain to us that there are about a preliminary study that would be to complete the samples and the soil borings. Is that correct?
Preliminary survey and a soil sample. Andy estimates up to $10,000 to have that worked, just for this preliminary to see, in terms of going forward. We do have, and the mayors have been able to find a lot of historical data that's also going to be Andy and then to, to the engineer, the other engineer.
And, yeah, street director Stone is also investigating the possibility of a grant from FEMA to assist with some of the costs for this.
Chris, you know, Paul, that there was an original study that had-
Yes, I found it in, what you mentioned, we searched it down, it's from '84. There were about 12 borings that were done at that time, looking at various structures in there.
They're probably still there.
Yes. I think that the summary was that there was probably some kind of ravine in the area that got filled in when they did Frank and Grosvenor. I think that was their unofficial assumption on the thing. Yeah, and they just went and-
Hydrology has really improved since that time, so maybe it's-
Their recommendations were to actually fix all the plumbing there, too, which is not entirely done at this point.
We did. The engineers designed it. We paid a million dollars.
So Andy has possession of that, but again, that's dating from more than 20 years ago.
I thought, you know, there was a discussion, and I'm sure somebody lied to me about it, but that they were, that they, because Ray did look, asked me about the, the survey that they were talking about, and they said it would cost X number of dollars, which I won't repeat about money. But anyway, I, it would be nice. I don't know that I see a FEMA grant coming out of this, but can we get going?
Okay. I think what he's trying for, he had a conversation at some meeting, I forget which one it was, that there are preventative, like FEMA grants for preventative maintenance, so to speak, mostly on the West Coast, where they deal with slips in terms of, you know, downpours and stuff like that. And he said, he can't promise anything, but he wants to investigate it. In the meantime, we do need to do, and see, we need to, we need to go do some borings just to check and see what's there, still there, from '84, and what has changed.
And you can do that without counsel authorization?
Yes, it's low enough budget to do that.
The last item is a list, which you're getting and receiving a copy of now, and this is the final street repair list. And this will accompany the ordinance that was introduced for first reading last week, so it will have two more readings. And these are the repairs that are to be performed on our streets. And once the ordinance is passed, am I understanding the process then, that it will go?
Goes out to bid.
Out to bid.
Specs and bids.
So, street repairs soon. Councilmember Phillips?
This is for overall paving, not including just patching stuff?
Correct.
Because I see Ohio on the alternate list, and it's got huge gaping potholes. So I hope that if it, I don't know if all the alternates make it. I'm assuming that still problem areas would also get patched.
I know in the appropriation ordinance, there is $250,000 for the, for the repairs and rehabilitation, but there is $50,000, I believe, allocated for the crack and seal or, or patch, patch repair work to be done.
Okay.
But, and I'll draw that, I'll ask him about that, and thank you for noting this.
His hope is to go ahead and do some of the alternates based on how the bids come in.
I believe last year, we were able to get to some of the alternates, so.
Great.
It all depends on pricing.
Any miscellaneous items for transportation?
Task force?
Oh, your task force meeting.
Yes.
What are you talking about?
We are convening a task force meeting for the transportation committee. It's a group that has met in the past. I believe they've had about six or seven meetings and have been working on a coordinated public transit system, with that among some other features in, in mind. And that task force is going to reconvene, I'm drawing a blank on the date.
Thursday, May 8.
Thursday, May 8.
At 10:00.
Okay, at 10:00 in the morning, in city hall, the conference hall. And so we'll be convening the group again, to begin meetings again. And I think that's the last item. And I think that's the last item.
Yeah, I was going to ask this, just kind of stepping back. I was just looking through this, name of streets. At some point, there was a map, I think Councilmember Flowers was working on this, of streets that we'd like to add bike lanes to. I don't know that any of these were outlined on that map. I know it was never a final map or an official map, but my concern is that as each year we repave these streets, we're missing opportunities to increase the pedestrian and bicycle access in these areas.
Okay, good comment. What I'll do is follow up with Street Director Stone then and ask him if there are any possibilities for the bike lanes, and if it just intersects with that list. Thank you.
One thing Councilmember Nicely wants to do is wrap the pedestrian, bicycle, you know, transportation all together, and try to get everybody back to the table so that we can talk about this.
Move forward on that.
Miscellaneous for transportation? We have just a couple quick miscellaneous items for finance. The auditor, I'm not sure what she was passing out, but she had a couple ordinances that she needed to talk about for introduction on Monday. So, the first, the two-sided piece of paper that she passed out is a sample from Hilliard of an ordinance regarding the expenditure of city funds for city-sponsored or city-hosted events, such as the retreat that council just had to talk about financial issues, such as Safety Day recognition luncheon, or employee recognition dinner at the end of the year. And so that we don't have to face special ordinances and appropriations for each of these as they come up. This would be a resolution that would authorize those types of events in advance, actually. And this is, again, a recommendation from our state auditors.
Actually, the auditors, the auditor in Lancaster called me about this last week and wanted to know if we had one, because her auditors are already there and had asked her about it. Obviously, Hilliard already has one, and they recommend that we have this, so I asked her to go ahead and send me anything she had, just so we could get a jump on it. Our auditors will be here Thursday and Friday, and I expect, you know, this to come up. But we do have, as Jim stated, several events that we do citywide, where we do pay for the meal and the facility and whatever's necessary. And we don't get council approval every time. It's in the budget, but evidently, the auditors think this is a good idea. So this is just to throw this out there tonight, let everybody look at it and see what you think.
Something that we'll probably introduce at Monday's meeting, but it can go through regular readings, I believe. Councilmember Phillips?
Would this be something that we would make a list of the events?
Not necessarily.
No?
No, we wouldn't need to do that. It would be--
I wouldn't think so. I wouldn't limit it like that. I know that in my neighborhood, we still have sector meetings, and they, the city sponsors a picnic, but most of the sectors don't have that, but that doesn't mean they might not decide to. So then, to avoid them having to come back, you know, if we list the Sector 1 and 2 picnic specifically, then they wouldn't have that option to bring that back. You know what I mean? Or to change things, maybe.
If you read the ordinance from Hilliard, in Section 1, it talks about the types of events that would be covered, and as long as it was the determination of the auditor's office that the event would fit into these guidelines, then it would be covered and wouldn't need a special appropriation, either from council or from some of the recitals. Again, we'll introduce this. If there are further questions on Monday, please ask them. We will go through the three readings. This is nothing that has to go quickly. Another Phillips signature?
I guess I would like to have some idea of how much we spend on this. A lot of times, when we get to the point of the year when we're working on the budget, things are still being finalized for the year, and we get kind of a, more of an overview of the budget, and not necessarily drilling down to this level of detail. So I'd like to know what we're spending on things like this. If we're going to kind of give a blanket approval, I'd like to know what we're talking about in terms of public funds.
We can do that. The second miscellaneous is an ordinance to amend the 2008 appropriation ordinance for some pass-through payments on a grant, a grant to pay for our CHIP project, $29,251 to the CDBG fund, which pays for part of our community housing improvement program. This is a, again, a pass through from the Ohio Department of Housing.
Yes.
Okay.
It's the current grant that we have. This would close it out, the one that we have, the partnership with Tri-County Community Housing Agency.
Well, this is the current year.
This is, well, yeah--
The current program that Mr. Stanley talked about completing.
This is the one we've had operating for two years. This will be the end of it. We need the appropriation. It's a pass-through grant, really. And then, of course, Doug Stanley has been here to discuss the new application, and so this will be the end of this one.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I'm fine.
This is the final payment on the CHIP activity that has occurred and ends this calendar year.
It's two-year.
With which we have been very successful in repairing and upgrading several houses within this area. That's all I have for finance, unless anybody else has anything. Oh, the mayor does, of course.
Okay, a couple of things. I think I passed out to your place, a couple of things I want to, Steve, to appropriate money for. If you look at the, there's a double-sided piece of paper there. One says lease rates on top, with Gateway at the bottom. We were approached a while back with Ron Forrest wanting to use, set up a lease agreement with Gateway to lease the computers, with the idea it was going to be a three-year leasing program with a five-year warranty on each computer. Originally, I asked him how many computers he had, about 150 in the city. I said, "How many are critical?" He said, "About 109." I said, "Can we knock it down a little bit?" We got, we got down to about 50, and then we went down to 30. Now we're only talking about nine in general, rather than 109. The idea is to, yes. You're welcome to listen. Okay, yeah. Essentially, what you're seeing there is that we want to start up the lease program. We can always add to it at any given year. My intention is actually to replace most of Code's computers with this time around, and start looking at the other computers over time. So that's one side of the page there. It's a small amount of money. What you're seeing circled, the two different leasing options. I didn't work out the numbers, which one's cheaper. Offhand, it looked like the monthly assessment was cheaper, but I'll have to do the numbers. I didn't have my calculator with me at the time. It's actually something I could fall, I could do within the budget, but I want to appropriate money from the unappropriated balance on this, to go for it as many as possible. The other one, on the other side, if you notice, is the CitizenServe. This is software for Code as well. This is where Code is working with several databases out there. I've been approached by Teresa Carter, saying that the databases she's working with do not talk to each other, and she wants to be able to spread this out, so the code offices can actually enter their own software notifications for turns of violations and inspections. She checked some different software with Ron Forrest. She seems to like this one. Ron seems to think it's appropriate. I asked her to check references of other cities I've used, that they seem to be happy with it, too. Startup is around 19,000. The maintenance is about 13,000. I thought this was excessive, till I thought about how much Code is, the budget for Code's about a half million, and therefore, to make it a working system, a little bit more efficient, I thought I'd give them the tools to do that. And that's why I'm also asking for an appropriation on that, if possible. The third one, which I think I gave you as well, is something that was basically discussed a while back about the website, HTML stuff. My understanding was that everybody thought it got done, but it never got done because no money was appropriate for that either. This is to make, it's addressed to Bill, because Bill is nominally in charge of the website. The explanation's pretty straightforward. I think the only change is the increase for the American Eagle ePortfolio. What that will do is increase the number of licenses up, in terms of how much you can, how many people can access it. So, in other words, it'll be more, it can be changed more easily. And this has to, as you can, you can read the run-through yourself there. And again, I asked Ron at a later date, so I'd like to appropriate money from this as well, if possible. And this would also end up in other admin, because it's a general. Yes, you want to copy this? Give it a copy. I have copies downstairs. I just, I thought I made enough, but obviously, I didn't. And that's really what I want to bring up. Oh, wait a second, a couple other things. Let's see. So that's Gateway, software for Code, website, software. Two other items in finance and personnel. Did we ever find out numbers for the dispatcher thing?
16, 5.
Okay. The other thing is that we are upgrading the, with the Newcom system, is that the compatibility of the answering machine, I guess this is when somebody calls in to, for a 911 call, not so much 911, for police dispatch. Since we're getting a new phone system, the old phone system we had, the old dispatch recording system is not compatible, of course, because it's as old as our phone system. So, I believe, Voice Over IP, it's called, okay, 16,005. So the police department needs something of that nature, too. So appropriation on that would be nice. And the last item is a personnel thing, was brought up about the age limitation for the APD. We're hoping Pat would still be here, I guess, for that. But the concept there is, I guess we need to look at the legislation on that. Nancy pulled out one from 1985, stating that we have already laid the groundwork for making that an age limitation not void, but we should set up a policy or else readdress it, I think, since the law may have been changed since '85.
One would help. Debbie, can you make that ordinance? She can think it.
Okay. I think you have copies of it, or not, we can get it to you. And that's all I had. So various appropriations and money for software mostly, computers otherwise, and a, was it Voice Over IP?
System for APD, in order to record the calls that come in.
Go ahead. Questions?
On the Code software, what exactly does this do, and what are citizen access pages that aren't included? Because a lot of people have said that it would be really useful to have easy public access to things like rental violations and things like that. So do you know kind of what this software is actually doing, and what other options?
You're looking at the page, which I gave my last copy to there. Can I have that back for a second? I think what we're, what you're looking at is the various different types of packages you can buy. The access pages, we could put in a later date. I think you can buy this by the modular portions of it. I don't think we're ready to do it, mostly because we don't know, I don't think they're ready to, I don't think they're ready for, to tell you the truth, at this point, Code is. We're going to have training on this, but at this point, I just want to get everything set up so they can talk to, that various databases can talk to each other. I also want to set it up so they can actually send out form letters for inspection, so they can increase their efficiency of inspection.
So, but this would, like, have a database for rental properties, and violations would go in there, and the follow-up inspections would go in there, and it would just streamline our record-keeping on this? Or what would this, what are we buying?
We're buying something that will be able to, it will streamline the record-keeping. Right now, we have, Teresa says about a dozen databases, access database. I think it's less than that, more than a half dozen, less than a dozen, for various things like rental permits, violations, variances, inspection recordings. To mesh all these things together is difficult. What happens if you change one, it doesn't talk to the other one at this point. The other thing is that because the age of the computers within Code is that some of the code offices can't actually enter stuff into her database. So she's, Teresa right now is the conduit for all the database entries, which means she has to go through each database and update each one for a change. The concept there, I talked to her about this a couple times at this point, is that the access database system is actually too small and too limited for what she wants to use. This will be a web-based system. It can be changed, and we can add modules on. One of the other things I'd, go ahead, one of the other things I'd like to do is also is that we can actually eventually send out, send out a letter system. Right now, they're spending way too much time tracking down the landlords. I want to change policy on that, and how these rental inspections are done. But the fact is that we just have no, everybody is not talking to everybody in the code offices at this point, on the computer, and I want to get that fixed. Is that what you're asking? If you want to ask more, you can always, you're welcome to talk to Ron, who's mentored her through this, and talked to her. As I say, she's very familiar with computers. I hope the, I've asked her whether it's as user-friendly as I hope it would be. And again, I was looking at the upgrade, the yearly maintenance of this is 13,000.
With 11 users?
Yes, well, excess, in case we need more.
Could we get as many as we need now and add users if we need them?
We don't need that many right now. I mean, if we only have four code offices, one officer, two secretary, one secretary to part time--
It says it's $100 a person a month.
What?
It says it's $100 per person per month. If we don't have 11 people using it, we, can we add users later if we need?
Oh, I see what you mean.
Could we get just what we need and add users if we need more?
Okay. If you appropriate the money, I can see if we can knock it down. How's that sound?
Maybe we'll sit back with you.
Well, no, actually, the money, as I say, is under what I need to go to council for, but I just want, but I don't want to take it out with the appropriated funds. I want to take it from the unappropriated at this point. I've already dipped into the operating appropriations quite a bit for these guys. And I'll just, I can call up the guy and ask about that. And again, I don't know much about the tracking package. I think one of the concerns of the tracking package is what to leave in and out, which always comes back to how much information, you know? It comes down to, you know, the classic that Steve will talk about is, you know, you give the person saying, "Front door are broken, lock broken," and you hand it out, and it goes out to the internet, and we defeat the whole point of what the student sent us here for. Because somebody can say, "Oh, okay, just let's do a search of all the, you know, rental properties with front locks broken, see what happens."
Is it, are we gonna, is it going to be like a template, where the code inspectors in the field with laptops fill it in?
I hope so.
Is it going to be a checklist-based?
Yes, I would assume. They already technically have a checklist in their back pocket. I have yet to search those, pick their pocket, and find out if they're actually using it.
It's usually a small, about a four-by-six piece of paper.
Mm-hmm.
My expense.
I want to get, you know, realize, I want more efficiency out of them, so I'm trying to give them tools to do it, bottom line.
We don't have any capacity.
Okay.
I recall a letter from Teresa Carson regarding this.
Carson, yeah.
I'm sorry, yes. That's another somebody I've talked to. Anyway, she was commenting that, at this point, the code is over 100%, 112% self-funding. Their fees are really covering the operation, and so this would only make that more likely that they could, they could do that and even exceed this level.
Those fees, of course, what you're talking about is permitting for, you know, everything from curb cuts to building fees, demolition, as well as rental fees. I did the numbers myself, and I didn't see the 112%, but then I might have missed some line items, to tell you the truth. I think I got to 103.
That's still pretty good.
That's pretty, well, yeah. Well, that's it. I assume that it's probably something I missed in the, on the financial reports.
If they make more content for administrative support.
What?
If they make extra, you can always pull it back for administrative support.
Question about the lease, leasing of the computers. Is that preferred over purchase, outright purchase, and for what reasons?
Yeah, this conversation's been going on since about January with Ron. One is that we don't really have a centralized computer purchasing system within the city, so people just kind of jump in and buy a computer. And true, you can get something cheaper, let's say, right off the market, go down to Staples or something like that, but you-- or something like that, but you still have to load it up with software, so you may be able to reduce the price over time, you know, by the initial cost. The idea there is that you end up with, you, the other thing, the basic premise right now is that we'll start rotating and get a system rotating computers in and out as they get older. We have, we have a three-year lease agreement where we buy it out at the end of three years with $1, but that computer is actually on warranty for another two years, or five years total. So in theory, we could swap out computers, older ones and new ones, over time, and, and still have two years of good life in them, in theory. There are some computers, of course, that get a lot harder use, and some don't. Kathy's office just bought a bunch recently, the court, court, court just bought a bunch as well, but that's the thing, it's, we're buying a hodgepodge, and sometimes we don't have computers of same capability. So it's, it's, it's just one way to kind of organize it, I think.
So this will eventually then work everyone over to a standard, this is the kind of computer you get, the kind of software you have installed on it, include the maintenance program.
Yeah, and some will be different, I mean, different, there are other packaged softwares out there, depending on if you're utilities, which has their own, you know, or the courts. But at the same time, is to, to start a program of doing this, as well as not, not somebody just buying something that's not up to snuff, because, you know, you buy it, it's, it's a cheapo, it works great, and then it's dead in a year, and we have to go back and do that initial cost. This way also, the capital cost is less, any given year. And again, originally, he was talking about trying to do a three-year swap-out, 150 computers, to change them over three years would be, you know, 50 a year, then, at the third year, you'd still be paying quite a bit. I think we'll just ease into it and see what it looks like, at this point. We can always add computers to the list of the leasing agreement over time.
And so, we've got two options for paying on it, if we do the 36 monthly installments, we're, we'll end up paying 18,000, but if we did the three annual payments, we'd pay 15, so substantial savings, if we can do it that way.
Okay, yeah. Alain?
I don't like the idea of a lease, I think we're in a, we're paying up, paying more money in the long run if we do a lease, over three years, there'll be $1,000 or $2,000 in interest. If we have the capability to pay that upfront, I'm sure the computers would still come with the warranty and, and what was needed to ensure that, that they're going to be operating at the end of it.
I'm not sure if we get, okay, you talk about a warranty from a, a large company, you mean?
If we were to buy the same Gateway computers upfront, I mean, they come with computers when you, when you buy them brand-new from them. So I'm wondering, I don't see it, the tie between the lease and ensuring that they will be operational at three years, or...
If it's a lease, hmm, I don't know if you get a five-year warranty with a straight-out computer, I'm trying to remember what mine was.
We can ask.
We'll ask, best thing to do.
Yeah, that would still be the option of implementing, I very much like the idea of implementing a standardized policy with that many, with as many employees as there are with the city. But I think that my question would be the same thing, can we accomplish a standardized policy on, you know, everybody will buy this computer, and if you have certain additional needs for software, you know, you can explain those, but I know that some of the colleges at the university operate with that, they, they have a policy. And here's where you'll buy it from, a central pool, and you will buy this make and model, and everybody has the same thing, because I could imagine it makes servicing a lot easier.
Just one more, what software does this include? Is this just Windows or, or a certain Office?
Probably Windows and Office, I think.
Office 2007, I think, and virus protection, I hope.
Office, yeah, 2007 is where we'll go, I think he's still trying to stick it with XP, because he doesn't like Vista, but I don't know if that's gonna be possible.
But it does have virus protection, right?
We switched over, you, or, we bought some virus protection two months ago, another brand that's cheaper and works just as well. I think you guys approved it, actually, I don't know.
We can remove that.
I think it was fairly inexpensive.
I had a question regarding the website?
Mm-hmm.
If we can switch gears, I guess? Is this, would this be a whole revamp, a brand-new website with?
Patriots, I think this is just for the, the city code system, at the city code, make a searchable website, I think. What's, what's the dialogue I want to say on it?
This was the handout that you had with the HTML format, it's a static HTML format and requires a lot of manual maintenance to keep it updated.
That's what we got now.
Right, 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 so...
Actually, this is something that was passed to Bill, but it takes money to do, so I guess it's up to council to do it.
These will, these are all being discussed tonight, but be introduced on next Monday. And some of these may be put together into one ordinance that has several things happening, but we'll make sure that Ron Forrest is here on Monday to answer these questions, because a lot of these do flow from his mind.
Sure.
The auditor still has one more thing, I believe.
Just one more thing to throw out there, I think Debbie and Nancy probably already know this, but Councilmember Bain had discussed changing our medical insurance from being self-insured, and so, I don't know if you've had a chance to talk to Debbie, or set up a time, Ray Hazlett has contacted someone who's willing to come and talk to us, we have a pamphlet of all the companies they deal with, and so, if you're still interested in pursuing that, let us know. I think that's it for me.
Okay, and that's it for me. But then, that's the end, I believe.
What time is it?